It's a night air out there.
I got lucky, went around once and the spot opened up. I was going to the back lot, but one opened up in front.
Okay.
I didn't get that one.
That was a massive mistake.
Folks, it is 6:32. I called the July 8th Planning Board meeting to order. And first on the agenda is the minutes. I'll have to train myself not to look at you, I have to look at Paul.
The chairman of the minutes of June 10th and June 17th will review and with some very minor changes and have been submitted to the planning office. I recommend.
Remove approval. Okay. Then moved, is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained. And A and R plans, do we have any? I didn't think we did. Okay. So none. And then we have a decision on Falmouth Hospitality LLC, definitive plan to abandon a portion of Lantern Lane located at Lot 2 and 556 Main Street, Falmouth. And we do have a motion in here that I would like somebody to make in a second and then we will discuss it as the board. Jim?
Falmouth Hospitality LLC definitive plan. Motion that the planning board vote to approve the application of the Falmouth Hospitality LLC under Article 4 definitive plans, Chapter 305 subdivision regulations of the Town of Falmouth. For the plan entitled definitive plan for abandonment of a portion of Lantern Lane prepared by Hancock Associates dated February 24th, 2014, scale 1 inch equals 20, with the following findings and conditions. The applicant seeks to abandon a 10,179 square foot portion of Lantern Lane, a private subdivision road, first approved by the Falmouth Planning Board in 1947 as Fay Lane Road. Lantern Lane intersects with two public ways, Main Street on the southernly end and Dillingham Avenue on the norally end. The portion to be abandoned is the southern intersection with Main Street. The applicant is further proposing to replace the abandonment portion of the road layout with an access and utility easement. The planning board has received a memorandum from Town Council dated May 27, 2014 advising that a written easement would be required. The board shall condition this decision accordingly. The board finds that the easement will allow the lot owners along Lantern Lane to access Main Street and shall be required, and shall require that the easement be maintained periodically improved so the access is not impaired. Furthermore, the board received correspondence from the Falmouth Fire and Rescue Department dated April 25, 2014 stating the Falmouth Fire and Rescue has reviewed the proposed plans and did not raise any concerns regarding the proposed abandonment. Finally, the board received correspondence from the Building Commissioner dated June 3, 2014 stating that it does not appear that the proposed abandonment and easement would create a zoning violation. Conditions, prior to endorsement, the applicant shall submit a written easement for access and utility purposes in the form of recording at the Barnstable County Registry of Deeds. Furthermore, the applicant shall submit details on how the easement shall be maintained and improved so that the access to Main Street is not impaired.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. And now the planning board, welcome discussion on this motion. Any changes you'd like to make, agreement, disagreement, comments? Paul?
I feel a little concerned about this easement request because it's dealing with a social piecemeal. We're getting pieces of a project and we're not seeing all of it. And if this easement is approved and the project does not go forward, we still have an abandonment right of way. And I'm concerned about how it will be maintained and periodically approved if there is no project follow-on to the abandonment of this room.
Yeah, those are my thoughts exactly, that it has come piecemeal. We have asked that it not come piecemeal. I didn't see anything here tonight. And Ken brought up that point about if it is abandoned, that is abandoned in perpetuity. It isn't just for this project.
Anyone else? Ralph?
Yeah, I'd like to ask our staff. If this is approved, is there no backing back? I mean, can it not be reinstated if there is no development that is accomplished? Can we then take the road back and can the planning board take the road back?
Under your own motion, yes, you can. And also the owner, the fee owner could, if they wanted to modify the definitive plan again, they could also bring in a modification.
Okay, so one of the conditions that we could place on this is that if there is no, if no development goes forward after, say, a certain period of time, that we will then reconsider whether or not we will take the road back.
You could if you wanted to. It's not necessary because the subdivision control law gives you the ability to rescind a plan.
So we have a way to protect the people on the road if no further development is accomplished and we had previously given up that portion of the road with this motion.
You can rescind, if you decide, if you make this decision tonight and at a future point in time, if for some reason something changes, you have the ability under the subdivision control law to rescind this decision.
Okay. That makes me more comfortable, that's for sure. Now, I also have, I want to ask your opinion of a change to condition number one on line two for the access and utility purposes. And that's talking about to submit a written easement for access and utility purposes. I was going to say add to the planning board for approval because it doesn't specifically say who that easement will be submitted to. And is it understood that it's the planning board? I would say, I would prefer that the words to the planning board for approval be placed after the word purposes. And I would ask my colleagues to comment on that before I make a motion to amend the conditions. Also, I would ask my colleagues to consider a second condition that states that no structures should be constructed over the easement with less than adequate clearance. Now, is that understood? Because there is a proposal to have a bridge connecting two of the, what I've seen, two of the structures. And I want to make sure that any resident that lives on this road is not restricted by having anything brought to their home or removed from their home by the height of that bridge.
You could add a condition if you wanted to. That would have to be described in the easement, would be the vertical clearance. So rather than guessing at a number tonight, you could, since you are requiring the easement be written and given to you, you could just evaluate the number proposed in the easement at that time.
Okay.
But the easement for access means that it would have to remain clear, unobstructed.
Right. I just wanted, I like things in writing. I don't like things understood. So I'll go back then, I'll drop that, that second condition and ask my colleagues to comment on my proposed amendment, which I have not made yet, to add the words to the planning board for approval after the word purposes in condition number one, line two.
Okay. In the past, my recollection is that the applicant submits it to the Barnstable County Registry of Deeds, that the planning board doesn't do any submission.
Okay. So I think we definitely do need to add this language because it's saying, prior to plan endorsement, which means there's no plan to record yet.
Right.
So the applicant can't record anything, no plan, no easement, nothing until they submit a written easement to the department, to you, for review. And we'll have town council review it and, you know, make a recommendation to you. But all of that, so it's not, so it's not being submitted to the registry.
Yep.
It's being submitted to the town, reviewed, and then once it's all right, then it would be recorded.
And we are the town, as far as my proposed language is.
Yes.
Yeah, that was a good catch, Ralph, on that. Thank you.
Well, if there's no further comments, then I will move to amend condition number one to read. Prior to the plan endorsement, the applicant shall submit a written easement for access and utility purposes to the planning board for approval in form for recording at the Barnstable County Registry of Deeds. Furthermore, the applicant shall submit details of how the easement shall be maintained and improved to ensure that access to Main Street is not impaired.
I'll second.
Okay. Is there discussion on the amendment?
I have a comment.
Yes, Paul?
I'm wondering if we're, at the end of your comment, therefore approval to the planning board, it should say prior to recording. Because you want to have the option to approve that before it's recorded at the Barnstable County. This says in a form, but you want to have the review prior to submitting your approval by the Barnstable County Registry of Deeds. Is that my understanding of what you want to do?
Yes, because it says prior to the plan endorsement, we're going to get this in, we're going to see this written easement and we're going to vote on whether or not we approve it or not.
And then they move to the recording.
Right, yeah.
Well, it's not quite what it says there.
Prior to.
Can I make a?
So what's your proposal? I mean, I.
Ken?
Prior to the plan endorsement means they can't register, they can't do anything prior to us endorsing. So we don't have to put that specific language in, it already covers it. Because they would be wasting their money at the registry and filing it, and then we say it doesn't work, they'd have to unfile it and correct it.
Are any other comments on the amendment? Okay, so it's been moved and seconded. I think it's been seconded.
Yes.
Yes, okay, I thought so. The amendment has been moved and seconded and there's no further discussion, so all in favor of the amendment to the main motion?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained.
Abstained.
Okay, Ken abstains. And now we go back to the main motion. Are there further comments on the main motion? Yes, Doug?
How is the width of the easement determined? Will that be similar to the width of Lantern Lane?
I think, the way this reads, it has to come back to us, does it not?
And it needs to match the plan. So the plan lays out, so the dashed lines on the plan. Remember, this is the plan that you would be approving, so the written description would match this.
Okay.
Okay, further comments? Yes?
I don't really have much concern, the difference between easement and the use of a private way.
Thank you.
And with the fire department approving it, I'm very comfortable with it.
It will stay pretty much as it is.
They'll have the right to come and go and do everything we need. The fire department goes up and down the street. I don't see it much different, other than allowing the landowners who own the fee allowed to use the fee for other purposes, but still allowing the coming and going, to pass and repass and do everything else. The neighbors have their rights, I think. Hopefully, that will be drafted, we'll get a legal opinion saying, yeah, this maintains all their rights and we should be comfortable.
And it can't be allowed to degrade because we're looking for a maintenance plan.
Actually, I think we'll be ahead of the game.
Go ahead.
Because this is a pretty degraded right of way. I would like to see it maintained.
Well, there's been some desire to keep it slightly degraded.
I know, but this portion of it is some of the worst conditions of access to Main Street, and I would like to see it maintained properly.
I just remember the drowned van.
Yeah.
Are there further comments on the motion as it is in front of us, as it is amended? Okay, so the amendment to the main motion has passed. And now, no further comments? If everybody's ready, okay. All in favor of the amendment, of the motion as amended? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Abstained. Okay. That passes then.
It does pass?
Yeah, I thought it had to be five, but no. It's a definitive plan.
It's not a special permit.
It is not.
It's a majority.
Oh, okay. All right, sorry. Okay, so that passes then. And we move on now to the release of Sunrise Estates. And there's some backfill that is still necessary there, a very, very minor amount. It was just checked today. And Marlene recommends, because we are not meeting for a couple of weeks, that we authorize the release based upon staff oversight, that it is now completed. Because it is a very, very small amount of backfill. Essentially, the work has been done. Does anybody have any discussion on that and/or an amendment to allow staff oversight? Yes?
I just have a question. I haven't been there in a long time. The last time I was there, there were so many little things that weren't done, I have a.
Marlene's nodding her head, yes, there were.
Because the last time we were there, they hadn't even done the finished paving yet.
Right.
Yep, they were out there last week finishing the top course and the sidewalk. They've taken out the pavement that was in excess of the plans and regraded.
Okay, I'm outside of staff says they've done according to plan, I won't question that.
So there's no report or anything, we just?
We always have done that this way. Staff says, yes, it's essentially done and we can release the bond.
We do have the engineering report. The engineer was out again today at 1 o'clock to meet with the road contractor to just identify these areas of, the curb, the curb needs to be backfilled in a couple of places. And they just couldn't finish it this afternoon, they're going to finish it tomorrow. But the roadway bounds were located and all the outstanding items on the punch list from the engineering report, we have supplementary reports saying that those items have been taken care of, except for this backfilling.
Well, that's how it's done.
Paul?
I was out there about a week and 10 days ago and they were making good progress. They've done a lot of work out there since the previous visit. My only concern is making sure the items that were raised by the planning board are completed as well as the punch list items by the engineering department. We don't seem to see what's going on with the punch list, so I'm happy to hear that they're making progress on that. And if that's the case, I have no problem authorizing staff to complete that when finished.
Okay, then I would need a motion that the bond can be released based upon staff approval, that all items have been completed.
I will move that the bond with Sunrise Estate be removed based on the staff report.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion on this? Yes, Ralph?
What's the amount?
It's $40,000, so this would be the final release.
Do you have any further comments?
No.
Okay. Anybody else?
No.
Okay. All in favor of the release of the bond?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained. Okay. Now, the next item has been advertised for 7 o'clock. Considering it is not 7 o'clock, we are going to have to do about an eight-minute recess here. So, I'm sorry, but that's the way it was advertised, so chat.
Is there anything else we can, could we take care of on the agenda?
We cannot, no. That's the problem. Well, yes, I can take care of general correspondence.
Yes, yes.
So then I would need a motion to.
I move that we take correspondence out of order.
Second. Okay, moved and seconded, we take correspondence out of order, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained. So that'll chew up a little bit of time here. Okay, we have the bicycling in Falmouth survey results. The Falmouth, Massachusetts Bike Ways Committee set out to understand how bicycles are used in Falmouth. The survey was written using Qualtric software. This survey was posted on the Town of Falmouth website for two months during the fall of 2013. The web address of the survey was made public through articles in local newspapers. Further, the web address was transmitted to the many village associations via email with a request to forward this information to their membership. Given that the 2015 U.S. Census population of Falmouth was 31,531, this survey had a little greater than 1% participation. Further, from the same data, the median age of Falmouth was 51.8 years. And the following are the key findings. Transportation in Falmouth is generally by automobile. Almost all respondents had a working bicycle. More than 80% were year-round residents of Falmouth. More than 66% of the respondents were over 50 years old. More than 50% ride their bicycle two or more times per week for recreation. More than 33% ride their bicycle two or more times per week to get around. More than 50% ride their bicycles year-round. Almost 60% find cycling dangerous in Falmouth. Most respondents saw lack of shoulders as an impediment to cycling. Over 75% cited speed as an impediment to cycling on many Falmouth roads. Almost 90% felt that road improvements would lead to more bicycle use. And then there's background information on this too, if the planning board wishes to take a look at it, that backs up the key findings. And I think this is something that we're really aware of with the comprehensive plan that we'll be taking up when we look at transportation to try to promote more cycling. What's, okay, what is that?
Text message, I apologize.
Text message.
I turned it off.
Okay. And this is from Fran Lightsome. Dear Ms. Kerfoot, I have enjoyed observing the planning board this spring so much that I am signing up for another year as your League of Women Voters observer. I understand that it is traditional to share my report with you, so it is enclosed. I hope I correctly reported what was going on and look forward to being able to write a more nuanced report next year. And as you know, these reports are published in the Falmouth enterprise, so you all might want to take a look at it and see whether you agree or disagree with, or I could read it because you have five more minutes.
Yeah, disagree.
Read it very slowly. Okay, mission of the planning board. The planning board studies and makes recommendations on the long-term growth of a town. The planning board also reviews site plans and special permits under the zoning bylaw and subdivision plans under the subdivision control law. The planning department assists the planning board in the administration of its duties as well as assisting other town departments with land use responsibility. The planning board meets on Tuesdays at 7:00 PM, and of course, you obviously know we've changed this now, in the selectman's meeting room at Town Hall. The members of the board are Patricia, oops, should be Patricia H. Kerfoot, not K. Kerfoot, Chairman Jim Fox, Paul Dryer, Robert Leary, Richard K. Latimer, Ralph E. Herbst, and Douglas C. Brown. Also attending each meeting is Town Planner Brian A. Curry. And we should have Marlene put in there too occasionally at ends. Planning board members were mostly occupied with site plans and subdivision plans, which were presented by attorneys or engineers who often requested waivers from requirements. Board members studied maps and asked questions and balanced safety concerns with community character and property rights in dealing with sidewalks, road widths, drainage, fire hydrants, landscaping, and curb cuts. When they encountered something new, Town Planner Curry was ready with information. Frequently, they waited for advice from the town engineer, town council, or fire department before proceeding. Some plans did not require approval and the board advised the developer or endorsed the plan. Other plans were approved with conditions and at least one request was denied. For some plans, the planning board held public hearings after publishing notices in the newspaper and mailing notices to the owners of neighboring properties. When people stood up to speak, Chairman Kerfoot guided them in addressing the board. Use the microphone, state your name, tell us how the proposed plan will affect your home or business. Sometimes Kerfoot rephrased their main points and asked if she had understood them correctly. The planning department operates under a complex and multiply revised set of bylaws. Engineers and attorneys seem to understand the process and developers work with the town planner to file the required documents and get on the right board's agendas. But the process often doesn't make sense to Falmouth residents arriving for public hearings, especially the division of responsibility between the planning board and the zoning board of appeals. Chairman Kerfoot would explain what the planning board could consider and encourage people to take other topics to the zoning board meeting, but residents often left without being able to put their concerns on record. Would it be possible for the League of Women Voters to assist Falmouth residents in understanding how controversial proposals are making their way through the town approval process and how residents can be effective in raising community concerns? And that last statement was in italics. As the year ends, residents are concerned about the Marriott proposed for Main Street and the proposal to demolish Elm Arch Inn and replace it with condominiums. Before adjourning, the planning board would sometimes take a few minutes to discuss its progress in revising the local comprehensive plan and its need for plans that are in development by the Cape Cod Commission. These plans will be important for determining Falmouth's future and should be reviewed thoughtfully as they are proposed. So, there you have it, the League of Women Voters' report on what the planning board has accomplished this past year. These plans will be important for determining Falmouth's future and should be reviewed thoughtfully as they are proposed. So, there you have it, the League of Women Voters reports, report on what the planning board has accomplished this past year. They do this for other boards and committees as well, as you I'm sure have noticed in the Enterprise. Yes?
Is the intent of the League of Women Voters to publish that in the Falmouth Enterprise?
Yeah, they always do.
They usually do, I don't know if they're going to do that one.
I have no idea, but I don't know that it would be changed at all, that that would be what. So, I would say if anybody wants to make any comments or changes, you might go up to the planning office and see about it. The planning office would send it back for those changes, okay? We got half a minute. So, I think I can go ahead now. We need a motion to go back to our regular agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, to go back to our regular agenda, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain. Next on the agenda, public hearing. The applicant is GSTVSLLC. Special permit modification to allow for storage of non-agricultural equipment and materials in the existing contractor's yard, BSS Design. And for the applicant for a presentation, please. Yes.
The notices.
Oh, sorry, Paul, the notices.
62 notices were, of two of butters were presented, were sent by certified mail on June 20th, 2014. 57 signed receipts were retrieved and two were marked unclaimed.
Publication in the Enterprise.
They were published in the Enterprise on 6/20/14, 6/27/14, and 7/4/14.
Thank you. Now for the applicant.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, members of the board. My name is Lauren Wainahan, I'm an attorney from Falmouth, and I represent the applicant. With me tonight is Mr. Gary Tavares and Mrs. Judy Tavares are here. Gary is the principal of the applicant corporation. I have a plan. Photo of the property. This property is located at 25 Crocker Road. It's 6.65 acres, it's in an agricultural district. I do have an assessor's map copy for you just for reference.
Thank you. So this is where the greenhouse is. It's not up here, the yard is up in here.
See that the property is highlighted in yellow. Very significant parcel of land in East Falmouth, you can see that from the map. The history of the property is that it has been known as pineland farms and operated starting in 1928. In the early 1940s and mid 1950s, there were farming operations on the property, tractors and excavators. In the early 1960s, Gary's father started planting trees, other plants and shrubs, and storing compost, loam, and manure on the property. In the 1970s, the storage of products expanded to field stone, pine bark mulch that was used on and off-site. The expansion of tractors, front-end loaders, bulldozers continued through the 1970s and 1980s that were used and stored on-site. In 1993, the family started to rebuild greenhouses and remodel the cold frames. There was approximately one acre of greenhouses built. And the operations expanded for the nursery on-site and the need for the vehicles and equipment to be used on the property expanded as well. From 1993 to 2004, that time period, new buildings were constructed for offices, garages, more polyhouses. Bins were built for more storage of materials. All-new water mains and on-site wells were built to supply water. All-new electric gas mains installed, paving and drainage was installed to control dust and stormwater. So a fairly significant operation. This photo was taken in 2000, and this is the Crocker Road entrance here. You can see the greenhouse buildings, the accessway coming in, and the site expands to the rear of the property. Property here is in the back of, or of this site is owned by the Town of Falmouth. This street here is the Logan Green Development, residential development that you see on your GIS map. This property here is developed with the exception of single-family homes in this area, which are in excess of about 300 feet from the site. In 2004, the app, the property owner applied for a special permit to store materials, supplies, vehicles, and equipment that were not used on-site exclusively in the nursery operation. What was happening was similar to other nursery-type operations where the vehicles and equipment that were being used for the nursery operation were also being used off-site for landscape and excavation use. So, the property owner took advantage of the new bylaws that were adopted and put forward by the planning board to have approval for the storage of materials and vehicles and equipment that were considered non-agriculturally used on the property. So that permit, this is the copy of the plan that's in your file. That permit applies specifically to this area near the property that I've highlighted in pink, in our special permit area. In 2004, as part of that permit proceeding, which was fairly extensive, there was quite a bit of information that was supplied in terms of the amount of materials and equipment that would be stored on the property. And I just want to file that again for the record because that special permit does reference an attached materials list as well as the permitted vehicles and equipment that are on a reference list, which is in the 2004 planning board file. And also with that filing, there's a summary of the history of the pinesland farms property that was requested by the planning board at that time, which I just summarized essentially, so I'll just file that for the record.
Okay, thanks.
So what was expressly allowed under that special permit for non-agricultural use? 15 trucks, two backhoes, two loaders, one farm tractor, four trailers, one bobcat, three forklifts, two tree spade attachments, two sets of forks, office trailers, storage trailers. So a fairly significant list. What was also expressly allowed was about 1,500 tons of materials, 10,000 square feet of brick and bluestone slabs, and about 150 cubic yards of shells, stone, and sand. Those are all specifically referenced in the permit. So, since 2004, the, there has been an expansion of the storage of vehicles and equipment and materials on-site and less nursery use ongoing. Currently, the greenhouses in this location are vacant. They are up for lease. If somebody came along and wanted to lease those greenhouses, they would be allowed to do that by right. This is in an agricultural zone, nurseries are allowed by right without any restriction. That could be a retail operation there as well. The areas I've identified in orange are the current nursery storage areas where plant material is nurtured and kept. There are existing nursery uses still ongoing on the property. Some of the materials that are stored are used for those nursery uses as well as the equipment. Currently, there are three tenants of the property, Clipper Landscape, J&amp;B Tree and Landscape, and Cape Cod Tree Experts, who are utilizing the property for storage of equipment and vehicles and materials. I think you know, and I think it's commonly known, that there is a demand in the community for contractor space, for contractors to have an affordable location to store equipment and materials. This application is under 240-38M of the zoning bylaw. As I mentioned before, that particular bylaw was adopted in 2000 by town meeting at the request of the planning board. It was a planning board article. Mr. Tavares and myself were actually involved in that as well. There were a number of contractors that participated in the hearings, for those of you that were here then and they remember that process. Along with that section, there was another section, 240-38K of the zoning bylaw. Both were adopted to address the need for storage of vehicles and equipment and materials for contractors. The reason there were two bylaws was because some properties could not meet the criteria of the K section. One of them being that you have to be outside of a 300-foot radius from residences. So the M bylaw was adopted specific to sites that had nursery operations on them. It was thought at the time that because uses related to those nursery operations were also ongoing off-site, that that bylaw could address those particular properties as well, such as this one, that were not outside the 300-foot restriction to residential properties. The K bylaw is more limited than this particular bylaw. So that, you'll likely hear evidence about that tonight, the distinction in those bylaws, but we are applying under the M bylaw, which is an application that was made in 2004 as well, under the M section. You'll likely also hear evidence tonight about enforcement action against this property, and I just caution you that those types of actions are not black and white. There has been a lot going on on this property for many years. The applicant's position is that any enforcement orders that have been taken against the property were not served properly, were not issued properly, and referenced the incorrect sections of the zoning bylaw for the special permit relief. It's not relevant, I think, to this application, but I just mention that because I would like you to consider carefully that those issues in terms of enforcement are not always black and white. There are gray areas. Regardless, the applicant is here. One of the criteria for review of the application is buffers to the property. You'll see on the plan that there's fencing all the way along both sides of the property. The lot lines are heavily vegetated, which you can see from this 2000 photograph, which I've been told by my client that still accurately represents what is there. There were additional plantings required in 2004 in this particular area at the request of one of the butters which were installed. There are no lights for the property other than motion detectors for security reasons. The traffic, as far as the traffic goes to and from the site, most traffic is from 6:45 AM to 7:30 AM. People coming into the site to pick up vehicles and equipment, and then coming back to the, to the site at the end of the job day, 4:30 to 5:45. The normal traffic during the day is small pickup trucks picking up supplies for jobs they're working on. The applicant is requesting a 7:00 AM hours of operation because it is felt that that time period misses the school bus traffic and also a 5:35, 45, and to miss that returning traffic. Not all vehicles, of course, are coming and going at the same time, that's important. And it's also important to note that not all the vehicles that you see on the vehicle and equipment list are on-site all the time. They're used on jobs off-site. But as far as the permitting goes, you really have to list everything in case there happens to be a piece of equipment or a vehicle that is on the site and if it's not referenced in the permit because it's rarely there, then you have a problem. So, everything has to be listed, it doesn't necessarily mean it's all there. So, in terms of what is up for review, I think it's important to distinguish what the byright uses are, the nursery use, the greenhouse uses, the woodworking area in this location. Woodworking mills are permitted by right in an agricultural district. In these locations that I've marked in pink, these are the areas where there are non-agricultural materials and equipment being stored. This area here, this area here, in here, and in here. As far as the, so as far as the review for the special permit, it's similar to what went on in 2004. There's a lot of testimony about activity on the site. Tractor use, moving plant material around, things like that. Those, again, it's important to distinguish between what is a byright use and what is allowed without restriction and what is subject to the special permit. As I said, the hours of operation requested are 7:00 AM to 5:45 PM. The applicant, if the board is inclined to approve the permit, would be agreeable, obviously, to that type of condition. Also, a condition that all buffers, fencing, and vegetation be maintained, that there not be any maintenance of vehicles and equipment outside, which there is not. No log grinding on the site. There was an incident, brief incident on that, but that's ceased. As far as noise goes, in 2004, the issue of noise from the property, from the nursery, generally the nursery operation that was operating at that time, was an issue in those proceedings. And there was a lot of information in the 2004 file about it. The applicant or the property owner had installed noise sensors on the property. They monitored the noise that was coming from the property. The applicant's position is that the noise coming from the property as of 2004 was greater than it is now because the daily operation, the operation was running every hour of the day. Now it's really not, it's being, certain areas are being used as a storage yard. So in your 2004 file, you have a report from a noise expert who reviewed the findings. And I will file this for the record, but I'll just let you know that sound level measurements were taken. The concerns of the neighbors on the Terrence Avenue Benito area were taken into account. It was essentially found that the noise levels were not adverse, that they were within accepted decibel levels. It was also found that there was other noise in the air in the neighborhood attributable to construction going on for single-family residences, the municipal airport, other things that were triggering noise, lawn mowers. So, anyway, this, this report, I'll just file for, for this record, so you can have it for reference. The allowed uses, as I've mentioned, in the agricultural district are nurseries, agriculture, floriculture, horticulture, farms, cranberry bogs, dairies, truck gardens, portable woodworking mills. All are byright without restriction. The benefit of this special permit proceeding, I think, is that the site can be conditioned. The uses can be controlled. It is a very large piece of property, relatively speaking, with residences in the area. And I expect tonight you're going to hear from those residential owners. But having said that, those residences grew up around this property. But having said that, those residences grew up around this property, and I know that that's not a popular concept, but it is a fact. They grew up around this property. That if there is an opportunity through the special permit process to allow these particular uses and condition them, I would submit that the impacts from this particular operation as it exists can be much less than a full-blown commercial nursery on this almost seven-acre piece of property with retail sales going on in the greenhouses. That's permitted in the district. We have filed, for your record, 77 letters of support for the application from residents of Falmouth indicating that they support the petition of the applicant stating that Mr. Tavares maintains the operations at the property to a high standard with consideration of the neighborhood, having no objection to and support the current uses of the property, and indicating that the uses provide a necessary service to contractors in our community that has a shortage of affordable storage areas, and it assists with employment and contributes to the economy. That's a letter that's in your file, and this evening, there were 15 additional letters submitted. Some of them are Falmouth residents, some are outside Falmouth. So, I'll just add those to the 77 that have already been filed. So, you have many people who are in support. We do expect that there'll be people in objection, and I guess that's where the balance comes in between what can be done on the property by right, what is alleviating a need in the community for this type of storage, a balance of those impacts, and what is the best situation. I would submit the best situation is to have the site governed by a special permit that has conditions on operation instead of having the ability to operate seven days a week, 24 hours a day, with lighting, with whatever noise is ongoing and ongoing daily This particular application is why I would submit the bylaw was developed by this planning board. It was to alleviate the need that's in the community. So, those are, are my comments. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have on me or Mr. Tavares.
Yeah.
I know it's a hearing, and I just, it was just unclear. Did you provide us with a list of exactly what's different from the last permit? You, we submitted all kinds of things, but I didn't really hear a call out of what we're changing, and that's what's not clear to me right now.
We did submit a new materials list and a new equipment and vehicle list. So, that's in your file.
So, we have to compare the huge list from the last time and this list to see what's different?
No, the, the new lists that are submitted are, are additional to what was-
Everything's in addition.
To what was approved in 2004.
Paul. Nope. I called him Paul, and then Ralph.
Thank you for your summary. I think that's pretty extensive. I just have two questions. Most of these testimonials that you passed out, they appear to be people living in the immediate area. They seem to be other areas rather than people in the immediate vicinity.
There are some on Terrence Avenue.
Most of them appear to be-
A lot of them are, are residents of the community. That's correct.
The other question I had is, most of the lots in this area are quite small, and in the north side, there's a six-foot fence with a series of small lots. On the south side, there's a big, larger lot. What's the nature of that lot, Lot 15?
I believe-
Is that also a farm-type operation?
I believe it was. I don't think it's currently operating as a farm, but it had been in the past. Gary.
Gary Tavares for the record. Lot to the right of my property has been used as a farm in the past and is represented here tonight, and it has been a farm way, way back in my grandfather's day. And it's been backed to residential with probably a little plot of a garden, that's about it. And the rear property, again, is owned by a town Falmouth conservation. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Well, Ralph had his hand up after Paul.
Good. Our agenda says that this special permit modification allows for storage of non-agricultural equipment and materials in the existing contractor's yard. I believe you said that the pink areas on your chart are where those things are currently stored.
Correct.
So, you're asking permission for something that already exists.
That's correct. And the application actually was for a special permit and modification of the special permit. But yes, this is an after-the-fact approval, essentially. Those activities are going on on the site now.
Those activities were undertaken without a special permit, is what you just said.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Jim.
Well, I have read everything that was sent to me this week, and I've reviewed everything here, and I didn't see anything that had other than a 2004 date on it. I'm kind of at a loss here for what you're asking for.
Well, we're asking for a special permit and modification of the existing special permit to approve the uses that are ongoing in these areas that I've identified. So, in the application, it specifically requests for the permit approval for storage of non-agricultural-related materials, vehicles, and equipment, of which you have lists in your file.
I've seen an extensive list of equipment, really long.
Yes.
What I haven't seen is anything new on list. Everything that's been sent to me, I'm not trying to create a problem.
Marlene has a comment.
We did not scan and send you the entire file. The list is in the file received July 1st of all of the additional equipment. So, you need to make sure that you're, that you do review the file in the office because we can't send you everything necessarily. So, we have the list. It was received July 1st.
I did receive many documents, and I did review them. I just haven't seen any new ones. I'll take the time to look at them, sorry.
Anybody else? Please be quiet. I have a number of questions. I'm gathering, again, I'm in the position of being the only person currently on the board who was on the board when the original permit was given, I believe. Mr. Tavares, at that time, was the owner and operator, and what I'm gathering now is he's no longer the operator, he's still the owner. Is that correct?
He's the owner and the operator.
But he has three tenants who are obviously operators as well. Is that correct?
That's correct, but he oversees everything and manages the property, essentially. So, the bylaw doesn't specify that it has to be the owner or owner-operated property. It can apply to tenants.
No, I understand. I'm trying to figure out what the differences are.
Owner and the operator. The title to the property was transferred to what's called a single-purpose entity for financing purposes. It was originally owned by Francisco Tavares, Inc., which is a corporation that has other assets. So, it was a new entity that was created to hold the legal title to this property, but the principal was, the principal person is the same, and the operator is the same, and the manager is the same. So, nothing's changed there. It's just the legal title to the property.
If I, if my memory is serving me correctly, however, I do not recall that there were any entities leasing any of the property at the time of the original permit was given.
I believe that's correct. Yep.
Okay, and I believe the greenhouses were, at that point, abandoned, so they've been abandoned since then, if I remember correctly. They were not abandoned at that time.
No, and actually, RF Morris was- Yeah, they hadn't been abandoned, but Gary can give you more clarification.
Okay.
Sometime around 2001, I made a business decision to not be in the greenhouse operation, and I leased the greenhouses out to the Madera's boys out of Berkeley, Mass. They ran it for about three years. Unfortunately, the travel between Berkeley and Falmouth was getting to them after three years of travel, and they opt out of their lease. After that, I had a very large company out of Wareham, RF Morris &amp; Company. They leased the whole operation. They ran it for about two and a half years, and because of this depression that we went into, they scaled back, as all businessmen did. And in the past, I would say five, four to five years that it's been vacant, we've been trying to have people rent it. We've advertised it all over the country. We've had some interest, home interest, the so-called homeowner is, wants to play with a greenhouse, you know, not professionals. They looked at it. The first thing I do is say, "Look, you got $50,000 to $100,000 cash in your pocket. If you don't, you can't open this up." In this depression, nobody's going to give you credit. Everything's C O D. If you've got that kind of money, you can turn it, you can make a profit, yes. Of course, nobody's got that kind of money, and that's why they've been vacant. I've had some operations out of Rochester look at it. I have somebody out of Attleboro looking at it for next year. They have a satellite in Wareham on 28, and it's a good, good company. They've been around as long as my company's been around. But again, they're taking baby steps to come onto the Cape, and they're watching their finances also, and that's the reason why it's been vacant. And I've given a heck of a deal for anybody that wants to sign a three-year lease. The first year is free, as long as you put the plastic, redo some of the equipment that needs to be fixed. You can have the place for free, other than paying the taxes that are owed on that portion of the property.
So, you're actively soliciting-
Yes.
-to get those greenhouses up and running again now that the economy has turned.
Yes, and we advertised at the Boston show, got three or four people questioning it. Of course, that was in, end of February. Greenhouse operations start first of March.
Yeah.
So, they went another year, they're looking at it, and that's where we're at.
Okay. Thank you for that. The other thing that I would like to see is, there was allusion to all of these other activities, but the map is quite blank as to what the other activities are. So, I would like to see those delineated as to what they are going to be. And again, because I am the only one on the board now who was here at that point in time, I remember that Mr. Tavares was extremely cooperative with whatever this board needed, and I'd like to let the board members know that, and my assumption is he will continue to be extremely cooperative with the information that we ask for. So, I would like to see that on here so that the board knows exactly what we are dealing with.
Could you give me an example, Mrs. Kirk?
No, because I don't know. That's the problem. I'm saying, what are we dealing with?
Okay, we'll, we'll provide you with the information.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Because I think that's what our board needs to make decisions here. We, if we're going to, if we're asked to be approving something, we need to know what we're approving. Okay? Yes, Doug?
So, are there any other activities on the site other than just storage of materials and equipment? Is there like daily loading of materials and sales of, you know, many manufacturing or anything like that?
Well, there is the woodworking area here that I've talked about. I don't believe there's daily loading. There would be loading, periodic loading, materials. There's the plant material that's only going on, but there aren't any sales. There isn't any retail activity where people are coming in, you know, as there would be with the, with the whole nursery operation.
There's another comment I would like to make, too, is that Mrs. Moynihan referred to, as you saw, the stack of form letters there, and I think the board should know that those are all in favor, and they are form letters, but there is probably almost as dense a stack in the file, negative, from a butters, and there is a petition as well in there that I would suggest that the board familiarize themselves with. It's way too extensive for me to be reading any of this into the record, as I do sometimes. So, I'd really ask the board to go into the office and take advantage of looking at the folder. Marlene, any comments or referrals that you have?
I do, we did receive a number of referrals. We have a special permit that was given to us from the zoning board of appeals for boat storage at the address, and we also have, and that's just a copy of the permit, so that's here for you to look at. And we have a referral from the Falmouth Fire and Rescue Department that I'll give to you. We received it June 16th. It also has the town's malt storage regulations on that, and they also provided you a copy with an incident report from a fire that they responded to at the property.
Just pass that on down, and people can look at it. Are there any other questions by the board? Okay. Now, I will open this up to public comments and questions as well, but what I want to make you aware of is it appears that there are an awful lot of people here who do want to comment on this, and we probably will have to continue it because there's really no desire to be here all night. So, I'd say probably another 45 minutes or so, we can listen to your comments, and if we're not completed then, we will continue them further. So, and I want to let you know that if you want to comment, please go up to the podium and state your name and where you are so that we, but we also have a viewing audience, knows who you are.
Good evening, Madam Chairman, members of the board. My name is Ed Kirk. I'm here representing Randy Raposa, who's an immediate a butter. I did submit yesterday a letter outlining our position and objections, and I brought several copies this evening, and so, your permission, I may give them to you now. The, the reason why certain activities are allowed as a matter of right in various districts is because of their low impact, and in an agricultural district, greenhouses and nurseries are low-impact. There's not a lot of noise in terms of the growing activity, obviously. Sometimes there's traffic, sales going back and forth. Once you get beyond the parameters, if you will, of strict nursery and greenhouse operations, things start to change, and so, the bylaw has, is, takes a cautious approach, and to the extent you're going to go beyond, anything that's purely agriculture, such as growing in a nursery, towns in particular, Falmouth, has a bylaw that says you've got to get some other kind of zoning relief. Now, in this particular case, I think we've heard that it's been four or five years since- Now, in this particular case, I think we've heard that it's been four or five years since those nursery structures or greenhouses have been in operation. I think it's a very difficult business, there's no doubt about it, to run a nursery, a legitimate nursery and greenhouse operation in this, in this day and age. And I can well understand the difficulties that Mr. Tavares faces. But he can't then, because he's, because of these difficulties, then turn around and make some use of this agriculturally zoned property, which once was a nursery and a greenhouse, and turn it into something quite different. And in this case, it has become a contractor's yard, probably out of economic necessity. If he can't get people to come in, if he can't get people to come in and operate under an agricultural scenario because of the investment that's required, it seems like what has happened, he's, he's become a landlord. The company, or I should say, the entity that owns this parcel now is a limited liability corporation. And I've submitted some of the material that would suggest that it's not even authorized to do business as a nursery or agriculture. It's, it's a, it's a holding company to, to, for the ownership of real estate, which he now leases out. There are three, three businesses there. J.B. Tree, Cape Cod Tree and Expert, I think it is, and Clipper Landscaping. So, you know, the fact that you're outdoors and you're dealing, say, in wood products or you're going out to take care of people's lawns, that's not agriculture. That's contracting. And that's what's taking place here. I don't think that the applicants would in fact be here had it not been for the fact that after numerous complaints over an extended period of time, the building department issued a cease and desist order to Mr. Tavares, basically stating, informing him, he is, in the opinion of the building commissioner, operating a contractor's yard. And he had thirty days within which to take an appeal from that decision. He did not. I expect the reason may be is that he couldn't operate a contractor's yard here. It would not be allowed. You have to maintain a minimum of three hundred feet from a residential dwelling. And I think there's a number of dwellings nearby. So in a creative fashion, he's come before you with a slightly different approach, not to ask straight out for a contractor's yard, which he's been, which has been determined to be the case, but to modify a previously existing special permit. Now, the special permit that was issued before is that there's, I think, one point two acres at the very rear of the property, and it was allowed for the storage of basically stone, cobble, things like that, which, you know, in, in the business of nursery, you have a job, you go out, you plant shrubs for the, for the customer, and sometimes there's an occasion to, to do some hard landscaping, too. And, and so that, that's, that was understood, understandable. And I think that was one of the premises on which the original special permit was granted. It was premised on the fact that there was a nursery actually operating. Without a nursery operating, that would not have been able to be allowed. So now, what they're asking for is, without a nursery, they basically want approval to turn the whole parcel into a contractor's yard, or get basically retroactive approval for the contractor's yard that they are now operating without a permit. So the section under which they seeking the further, oh, the modification of the rather limited special permit is two forty, thirty A.M. And the planning board may grant a special permit to the owner of any lot not located in a water protection, water resource protection district, any portion of which is currently in agricultural use, currently in agricultural use for commercial nursery operations. I think you've heard tonight, there's no current operation of a commercial nursery. And if there, if there is a commercial nursery, then the board may allow some other portion of the lot for the storage of equipment and supplies and the parking of equipment for non-agricultural purposes, if the planning board finds that such other uses, that would be the non-agricultural uses, had previously been accessory to the commercial nursery operation. We don't have anything resembling that here. We have a complete absence of a nursery use. And as a result of the absence of a nursery use, the owner, Mr. Tavares, has been basically renting out the property, not for use as accessory to the nursery, but three entirely independent businesses, two of which are tree operations and one of which is a landscaping business. So the, and the board is, I can see struggled a little bit with trying to find out what is it that we're being asked to consider. I think you need, I can provide you some material about J.B. Landscaping and the, I should say, Clipper Landscaping and the two tree operations, but I think that should come from the applicant. I think you need to know who are the owners of all these vehicles and this equipment. It's just sort of a laundry list of this truck, that truck. Who, who owns it? Who owns, who owns title to the property? What is, to the vehicle? What is its purpose? And you need, you need to consider that carefully, and I think they need to come forward. So it's not like a stealth approach here, although I do understand Mr. Tavares' predicament, but there is a bylaw to uphold and there are residential and neighborhood concerns to think about. Certainly, maybe other people have moved in since this property was once being operated, but this is a recent development, in terms of what's going on there now. I think it was a nursery, as it once was, there wouldn't be the kinds of problems that they are, that the neighbors are having. You will, you will hear from the neighbors that there have been, there are trash piles, there are problems with aroma, there are rats, there's tremendous vibration from machinery on the property, the alarms from backup trucks, the multiple use of chainsaws continually on the property, none of which is agricultural. They're bringing in very large logs, telephone pole-sized trees come on the property, they're being cut up, chopped up, developed for firewood, further refined for mulch. It's not an agricultural operation. It's entirely different in terms of its impact on the neighborhood. So, as I say, I think a number of the neighbors will be able to explain from their own observations what exactly goes on there. But I wanted to give you the, sort of the structural background here, what we're, what we're dealing with, keeping in mind what is allowed as a matter of right, what you have to establish as a threshold fact, is there a nursery? If there's no nursery, there shouldn't be any, almost shouldn't be any further discussion. And, and the application should be denied, just on that basis, once, if you conclude that there's no nursery. And I think you've heard it from, from the applicant, Mike. So being aware of the clock and the chair's concerns, I'll take my leave and-
You need to say what you need to say. I'm not trying to-
Yes, no. But I, I think, I hope that I've, there'll be another hearing, you'll have an opportunity, hopefully, to review in the meantime, any other points that I wanted to make that are in the written material. And I think that's it for now.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Moynihan. I would like to also read the Falmouth Fire Rescue Department referral, if you will, because I think this is part of what needs to be said and known to the board and to the public. The Falmouth Fire Rescue Department requires further information concerning the request before giving its approval. And this is dated June sixteenth. I assume Ms. Moynihan knows this. Specifically, we need to know exactly what non-agricultural equipment and materials the applicant wishes to store and where they wish to store them on the site. And that was the request that I made, too. We need to know. Also, whereas there already is storage of agricultural materials in the form of wood chips and mulch on the site, the FFRD will require that the existing storage is in compliance with five twenty-seven C M R seventeen, which address the storage, manufacturing, and processing of forest products. Please see the attached summary of the regulations concerning mulch storage. So this is for the information of our board as well as the public. Okay, now, I'd like to continue and what I would like is make sure that you say what you need to say, but a lot of repetition need necessarily be made because there are a lot of people who do want to speak. So may I ask anyone else who wishes to comment from the public? Yes, ma'am? Please state your name and address.
Hi, my name's Erin Devlin, and I'm located at seventy-three Lodengreen Drive. So I believe I'm here in the very last house, lot twenty-five, on the COVID side. So I actually located where the current permit is. It is actually a family-owned home, so they, my family's owned it since the mid-eighties, my grandparents. So I've kind of got to see over the years, it was more of a forest area and what it's become now. Some concerns that I have are, there's a huge dumpster back there, I don't know if I should keep pointing, but located kind of where the bins are, where the cobblestones, are huge trash bins. There are constantly dump trucks back there. There's machine lifting the material to go in this huge trash bin. It's piled high above the fence line. I have a clear view where I'm located. The trees really don't cover that area. They're, some of them are damaged and have fallen over the years, or the wind has blown them kind of down. There's stone piled up against the, I thought it was a courtesy fence, but I found out it was a six-foot fence that was asked to be put up. There's stone kind of piled right up against that wooden fence right there, and I believe it needs to be fifty feet away, if I understand it correctly. And the noise, it hasn't in the past couple of weeks, but prior to that could be as early as six-thirty in the morning until about six, six-fifteen at night, as far as a lot of vehicles going back and forth there. There's also been concern in the past that has been fixed. The back fence, for a significant amount of time, was down, and people later at night were coming on the property. I did let one of the tree company people know. I came and visited one day because normally I would think it was just animals, because there are a lot of animals in that area due to that location being conservation land. But my dog was outside barking, and I went over close to the fence, and I heard people behind there. And then I heard them scream and yell to the other one and run away because my dog was scaring them away. So that was around, it was either April or May, and around quarter to nine to nine o'clock at night, that there were more people on there. But prior to that, there was a lot more action, but that fence has been fixed. I am someone who has not been able to put my bird feeders up in the past year and a half, and a big reason for that is due to the rodents that are coming from under that fence over to my property, which is concerning to me that I can't even enjoy that. So, but those are the concerns that I have at this point. Trying to see if I left anything out. The trash is the biggest, biggest concern right now, and the, the noise. And since taking down my bird feeders, I don't have as many rodents coming over, but I just think that, you know, it's not fair that people can't even put up their own bird feeders due to rodents coming from the other side. That's all. Thank you.
Oh, hi, my name's Larry Jacobson. I live at Ten Menito Avenue, which is, makes me a kind of a quasi-abutter, I guess, an interested party. I got a letter as an abutter. And I am going to make my comments kind of short, too, but I wanted to ask you a question. Have any of you had a chance to visit the property?
Not recently, I haven't, no.
Will anybody?
Yes.
Oh, yes.
And you, it'd be nice if you kept notes of what you saw, so that, you know, we can see. Actually, I don't know if I can go onto the property to look around. I can walk around the outside. And since a good share of the fences and the privacy trees are down along the, see if I can get my directions right here, the south side of the property across my house, it's very easy for me to see what's going on in there. Okay, good. I'm glad that you'll go, and I'm glad you might take notes. I volunteer to go with you if you like, that I'd like to go. I was also, I was also concerned that you hadn't gotten all the documentation about the paperwork in two thousand and fourteen, so you're not aware of the enforcement actions, you're not aware of the complaints, you weren't aware of the fire until you just read it into the record, et cetera, et cetera. In general, the situation, there's a lot different than depicted in Ms. Moynihan's presentation. It's, it's, it's a wasteland. It doesn't, it's not orderly. There's piles of rubble and dirt, things piled up against the fence. It's not attractive. It's certainly a drag on property values. And I think for the more immediate abutters, it's probably unsightly and unpleasant from the ways I'll let you, let them explain. Anyway, I guess there's two points at issue. One is the permit for the contractor's yard, the other is the permit for additional storage. I think the permit for the contractor's yard is most important. And I understand that it can be permitted if no adverse effects on the residential nature of the neighborhood exist, and there's other criteria. The thing is, there are significant adverse impacts on the neighborhood. And particularly, since the proper comparison is to the site with no contractor activity on it at all, and the site maintained as, as required in the special permit given in two thousand and four. We're a long ways from there. So I encourage you to remember that it's not a question of enlarging the existing situations. It's a, it's a question of whether or not the existing situation could be permitted at all. I don't believe that it should. And I would personally, my position is I'd like to see it taken back to permitted activities only, you know, sort of full stop. Now, you could decide to issue a permit, and I don't know what might happen, I'm a little bit afraid of what might happen to the neighborhood under those circumstances for some reasons I'll describe. Now, I understand that you can apply restrictions, but in the past, I don't believe we've seen any real indication that the applicant respects the restrictions that you've applied in the past with the two thousand and four permit. And we could go through those in detail, but I don't feel like the negotiations are in good faith. So that brings us to the lesser point, the question about the permit for the additional storage in the backyard. And I'm just interested in talking a little bit about how the, I guess my point is that there's no reason to extend that permit if we haven't met the terms of the first one. There's no reason to extend the existing permit if, if the conditions of the first permit in two thousand and four for certain storage of things is not met. I just happen to have a, a couple of them here to mention. I've got a list of the actual permit letter, the letter from the planning board, I guess, to the applicant. And I'm missing most of the pages, but there's something in here about the hours of operation being between eight and four-thirty, Monday through Friday. You might as well cross that out right away. I think I have reported there was activity there as early as six forty-five this morning, and activity on weekends is very common. Four-thirty is certainly, and how can anybody make a living working out of that place at from between eight and four-thirty? There should be a fifty-foot side yard setbacks. Now fortunately, because the privacy screens are not working, it's possible to walk up to the edge of the property on the south side and look. And there's piles of loam that are within a few feet of the edge, there's piles of rocks and so forth that are within a few feet. If there were fifty-foot setbacks, there would be almost no land to work with in the middle. So I don't, I don't blame the fellow for trying to avoid those setbacks, but the, the fact is, I don't think it's possible to, for the property to operate under conditions like fifty-foot setbacks, which are fair to the neighbors. I don't believe this operation belongs in this neighborhood. It's a residential neighborhood. It's not a, it's not a contractor's neighborhood or an industrial one. What else do we have here? Oh, the applicant shall install fencing and cedar tree screening as per the May twenty-five, two thousand and four plot plan. and cedar tree screening as per the May 25, 2004 plot plan. Now, I walked along half of the property lines last Saturday. I counted at least 15 sections of fence down. I am aware that last year, there was much larger sections of fence down for periods of time, and unfortunately, I don't have accurate notes, but at least for, I would say for at least a year. There is a requirement for cedar fence, cedar tree screening. The trees are, at least the trees I was able to observe are largely dead and dead, dying, in poor repair. They don't provide much privacy at all. There just doesn't seem to be any good faith willingness to live within the terms of any permit. And it's hard to imagine how there could be. There's not enough money in that place to, to, to adhere to these restrictions. I just don't think that it's on to have that place as a contractor's permit, and I don't believe it's, that it's functioning in compliance with the permits it has right now. And I'll stop in just a second. I'd like to see it returned to a condition where it complies with the permits that it has and the restrictions thereof. Thank you. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak?
I guess I'll speak.
Don't be shy.
I won't be nearly as articulate, but I'm Vicky Giaquito, and I'm from 42 Bonito.
Sorry, I couldn't understand what you mean.
Vicky Giaquito, 42 Bonito Avenue. And basically, I am located on Bonito, pretty much directly across from the woodworking area. That is not nearly as quaint as it is given the terminology. From my property, I have, for the last couple of years, saw telephone pile, telephone-sized logs being moved by excavators, being shoved in machines. Trees and fences do nothing to hide that, hide the noise, hide the feeling it gives. It's, you know, when we moved there, I understand, she said, you know, we moved there, but it was not like that 10 years ago. And it's just really upsetting to the neighborhood. And they don't respect ours, and they don't respect the neighbors. And that's all.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to say something? Sir?
Madam Chairman, members of the planning board, I'm the largest of butter there, Randy Reposa. And-
Could you state your name, please?
Randy Reposa.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
That's okay. I have photos here that we've taken through the, through the open, broken-down fence line. I don't have enough, if you want to, to look at, but you can look at it yourself. You know, I know the Tavares family. I've been there since 1935. I was only five years old. Wonderful people, Pineland Farm Greenhouses. They were known, there were many articles in the newspaper about them. We were proud to be neighbors of them. Gary's grandfather ran a fruit and produce peddling business, probably one of the best on the Cape, out through Osterville and Hyannis Board. What a change, what a change. That was a real nursery and farm operation. My sister and I picked strawberries there. We helped unload the pickup truck, the lending truck at night, get a few overripe honeydewes. We couldn't afford to buy honeydewes in those days. That was for rich people. But what a change. Now, they talk about Greenhouse Association related to a greenhouse. My God, what a, what a roost. There is no greenhouse, there are no plants. They talk about a, also a sign posted out there, a tree farm. No, there's no tree, no farm. Just ways to get around things. We all know that. The neighbors, many of them, these are nice people. These are East Falmouth people. We're not like from West Falmouth, where you can hire a bunch of attorneys, a battery of attorneys to pull something. But it's just common sense. This is ridiculous, what's going on here. Three contractors running out there. I counted this morning, 16 in, 16 out. 16 passenger cars and pickup trucks, private, 16 out. They're not doing anything in there. What are they doing in there? Maybe one or two of them might be chopping some wood. By the way, tree farm. Huh? Wood processing mill. You know what that's, the definition for that is? Making lumber, not, not firewood for sale. That's what tree, I looked it up. I took time to check these things out. This is, this is just a roost to get around. That's all it is, you know? Common sense. So, it's, some of these things make me laugh. Talking about the equipment that was used back when the parents, the front-end owners and so forth, back in the 1960s and '70s. My God. Raymond and I, that's the uncle that took it over before he sold it to Gary, had a sawed-off truck tractor. I fell off that tractor. We were just racing around with it. That's the kind of equipment was there. Don't let them kid you. You know, we're supposed to think of this community as building it up, caring for it. It's East Falmouth, it's not West Falmouth, it's not Osterville. But a lot of people have their homes invested there. And you know, most of the people that live there, much to the point brought out by the, by Moynihan, that these people provide jobs and add to Falmouth's economy. How about the devaluation of the properties around there? What about the fact that most people, especially the people in East Falmouth, a lot of their savings is in their homes? What happened in 2008, when homes valued, the whole economy crashed? Doesn't the same rule apply? Just think about these things. It's sad. What's going on there is really sad. It's an insult. It's complete disregard for other people. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Heather Vaughn, and I live at 56 Bonito Ave. So, I am probably somewhere in this area. I'm kind of like, there's trees behind me, but it looks upon to where Clipper Landscape is. And I'm not going to reiterate what everybody else just said before me, because I agree wholeheartedly with everything just said. Like my neighbor Larry said, you know, you guys said you hadn't seen the property, you hadn't visited. Well, now that you've heard everything that's gone on, I'm sure the cleanup crew is going in this week and is going to move the piles and make everything look real pretty in presentation for you. And then after that, it will be gone. The fence, somebody mentioned about the fence, excuse me, being down. The fence started getting put back up when Clipper Landscape went in, and they started to put the fence up, piece by piece, I think as courtesy for the neighbors, I hope. But until then, the fence had not been up. The trees that had been applied to the last permit, which I lived there when we went through this permit the last time, none of that had been done. I'm just not sure what is going to go back there next. It's hard to understand. The woodworking process, I agree wholeheartedly again. But he also had a smoker. I don't know if it was permitted or where that came from. But he would dry the wood, and on certain days, depending which way the wind was blowing, if you went outside, it smelled like you sat in a cigar room, and it smelled horrible. You couldn't open your windows. I don't know if people have allergies or not to certain types of wood. Would that affect them? I'm not sure. But it was horrible. And I heard the operation stopped once the thing caught on fire and that ceased. I had been into the town hall to talk about different complaints, and every time I came in and they would send me to see Mr. Gore, he said, oh, well, we already have a complaint on that. We don't need another one. So, a lot of people, I think, if they are making complaints, aren't getting heard, or if they call, because they're like, well, we have a complaint on that already. We're looking into it. So, there might be more that aren't getting relayed, and I don't know how that is to be fixed also. I see we have two representatives from Clipper and Cape Cod Re. I would like to hear what they have to say about their daily operations and how they feel that it works, whereas where the residents, they're the operators of it. I also would like to know the hours of the operations. I know in the last permit that he applied, it was certain hours of operation. But the Saturday, it was supposed to stop at 12 or 1 o'clock. It doesn't. It's till sometimes 6, 7 o'clock, the trucks are coming in and out. People have to make a living. I understand that, especially landscape companies, that's their busy season. But something has to, there has to be a balance somewhere, some way for us to live there. The property that most of us live on was already subdivided to be built prior to this extending. So, I know there has to be a balance, and I think we just have more questions than anybody has answers for right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
I'll try.
Pardon?
I'll speak. Jim Holmes, Cape Cod Tree Experts. I probably precipitated a lot of the problems up there. I brought a big grinder in to grind up some big logs. And I didn't know the impact it was going to have on the neighborhood. And there's a 1,000 horsepower engine, and it was rattling like hell, rattling like hell when the big logs went through. And it took us three days to do everything, and it was done. And the first time around, I think it was a big deal. The next year, we tried to do the same thing, and we get complaints. And we stopped up to the third day, and we do not grind on the property anymore. I don't want to inconvenience the neighbors. I'm a resident of East Falmouth. I was born and raised in East Falmouth. And we were trying to put out a nice organic mulch instead of the chemical junk that everyone puts down. Gary and I, Gary and I had a nice process going on with organic amendments, but obviously, that's gone by the wayside. So, to those of you who we disturbed, I apologize. We're not bringing wood chips back to the site. We're trying to get rid of all the debris, all our logs that we've taken down over the years. Hopefully, that'll be going out starting next week, and we can get the place cleaned up and more friendly for everybody.
Anyone else? Yes, Lauren.
Just a couple of comments. I think probably the best thing to do is maybe respond in writing to a number of the allegations. If the hearing's going to be continued, you've asked for additional data on the plan. So, rather than me going through all of it tonight and then more comment, I can just file some written response to some of the allegations. I did want to make a couple of points, just to, just to really clarify things to leave you with. Mr. Kirk had mentioned that this use is not allowed by the bylaw because it's within 300 feet of residences. That is false. The bylaw that we have applied under, which is the M bylaw, does not have that restriction. So, I want that to be clear on the record, that that is not correct. The application, if you look at it in your file, is for a special permit, as well as modification of a special permit. That's important, which seems to be a lot of talk about the modification. The special permit applies right now to the rear of the property in this area. The conditions of the permit, the hours of operation, the setbacks applied to this area currently. So, some of the testimony you've heard about operation and hours outside the special permit, violation of conditions, you have to keep that in mind, that that special permit and those conditions apply to that particular area only. And my point exactly in this whole process is through an additional special permit process. There can be restrictions that can be imposed that apply to the entire property, which can balance the impacts of the property and the concerns in the neighbors. But right now, there are no restrictions on the property, except for the back area. So, that's important. Mr. Kirk has also indicated in his written correspondence that the agricultural use has to be the principal use of the property. And I'd like to just leave you with the point that that is not the case. The bylaw says that so long as all or a portion of the property is devoted to nursery use, that you can issue the special permit. Nursery use under the bylaw is defined as a place where trees, shrubs, and plants are grown, whether from seed or otherwise, including plants maintained for sale on or off the premises. And then it goes on to talk about in conjunction with that, the storage of products, mulches, et cetera. So, I have told you repeatedly that there are areas where that activity is going on, and I identify them on the property. And I can submit for you photographs that were taken today that show those areas where plant material is being nurtured and grown as part of the nursery operation. So, I'd like to just correct that. Yes, the greenhouses are vacant. That does not mean that there are no nursery operations on the property. The bylaw does not require, as Mr. Kirk has indicated in his correspondence, that it be the principal use of the property. That particular requirement of the bylaw was in the initial draft of the town meeting article, and Mrs. Kirk, you may remember this. There was an initial draft that was actually published in the warrant book that had different restrictions. Had to be the agricultural, had to be a substantial portion of the property, had to be devoted to commercial agricultural operations. That's what Mr. Kirk is alleging is not happening here, and therefore, you cannot issue the permit. That particular language of the bylaw was going to be rejected by the Attorney General. And the bylaw was redrafted and submitted on town meeting floor to be much more general, to say that only all or a portion of the lot be devoted to commercial nursery operations. So, that's an important distinction. You do not have to have a principal use of a nursery. You do not have to have a substantial nursery operation under our bylaw. The findings for the previous use of a nursery, those were given to you, and those were in the 2004 permit. You made that finding in 2004 based on the history of the use of this property, and I would submit that you can make that same finding tonight. As far as the fence goes, they are in the process of piecemeal repair of that. Obviously, there's a cost to that and a manpower issue there, but we do appreciate the comments of the neighbors. I'll discuss that with Mr. Tavares after the hearing as well. The traffic impacts, again, the testimony of Mr. Reposa is telling. You've heard tonight all the horrible stories about the activity on this property, but keep in mind that Mr. Reposa this morning counted 16 vehicles in and 16 vehicles out. That's an AM peak hour, 32 vehicles. That's a very low traffic generator for almost seven acres of agriculturally zoned property. So, that, I think, is telling testimony. So, in any event, I think that the applicant would like to request a continuance of the hearing, would like sufficient time to provide the details you've asked for on the plan, and to further respond to the concerns of the neighbors. I'm sorry that some feel as they do. I think the Tavareses have always felt that they've tried to be good neighbors. The family has been in business and lived in the community for decades. And it's something that I think, having worked with them for many years, I do know their commitment to- their commitment to working with the neighbors and trying to address the concerns as best they can. Thank you.
Thank you. And I think at this time, we'll cut this off and continue it to, what are we looking at?
You're meeting on, you're meeting the 22nd and 29th of July. This is a special permit to, so it requires a supermajority. So, the 22nd's agenda is getting a little full. So, if you're all up here, if you're all planning on being here on the 29th, I would recommend you, you continue to the 29th.
That's a joint meeting though with the selectmen?
That'll be the, it'll be the same model as
It will.
The last time where you meet for an hour and then it's a Tuesday night, so you'll continue on with your regular business.
Okay, fine.
But I would, but I would like you to confirm that nobody has any scheduling for the 29th.
No?
No. You're all going to be here then for July 29th? Okay, so we can continue this to July 29th? Yes, ma'am?
Can I just ask a question? How does the special permit process actually work? So, you gave them a special permit in 2004 to behave in a certain way?
Correct.
They got a cease and desist. They have pretty much done exactly what they want on this property by turning it into a contractor's yard. And now, the process allows somebody who has behaved badly to ask for more privileges?
That's not a given that they're going to get more.
No, what I'm saying is that how it works?
No. They can ask, but they don't necessarily get. Okay? And in this town, as in most places, the whole process is complaint-driven. We give a permit, but if people don't complain, we don't know that things have gone awry necessarily. So, anything that is not covered under the permit that is taking place has to be complaint-driven as when people start looking into it for enforcement. I think your hand went up first.
Wait, wait, wait. People need to be going to the mic.
Yeah.
But we closed the hearing.
No. It's continued. Go to the mic.
Well, I won't tell you who I am because it's all closed up, but I have a question for you. The permit for the
The hearing is not closed.
Oh, okay. Larry Jacobson, Ten Minuto Avenue. My question is, the permit issued in 2004 makes allowance for an annual inspection.
It does.
Right. And what does, what is required to trigger that and what is the outcome? What is the process?
I saw that and when there is an annual inspection required, that is normally on the planning office's calendar and I cannot tell you whether that has taken place on an annual basis.
Any reports would be in the files.
Okay.
We'll have to go back and review the 2004 file.
And then how does action, how does action occur after such an inspection?
Then the building inspector takes action and he can issue a cease and desist, I believe.
Which he did.
Which he did.
Which he's done.
Yes.
Right. Okay, it'd be advantageous for me, at least in the near term, if any additional permitting involved a scheduled annual permit inspection, perhaps every year or two years. I wish to consider that.
Okay. I understand that. Yes, sir. And then we do have to move on because we will be back here on the 29th.
I'm a little confused.
Okay.
We came here to a hearing about a proposed plan. I don't see the proposed plan in front of us.
Well, that's the proposed plan and it doesn't have enough definition, which is what we've requested.
Well, that's exactly my point.
No, we've requested it. The fire department has requested it. We couldn't even begin to act on something like that. Okay?
Well, then why not wait until more information comes in before we get all these people together?
Because part of what they're saying allows the kind of thing that needs to be defined on the plan. So, it's a process, I think is the best way to put it.
Okay.
We have to say what we want to see. You have to say what you want to see and it's a process.
So, we don't worry enough about that, what they're proposing here?
Oh, no. No, no, no. And we can modify too.
Modification means?
As this goes on.
What does modify mean?
Modify means that they can ask for something, but we can say, "No, you can't, but you can do that."
Can I just say something?
Yes, Bob, go ahead.
A hearing is a gathering of information for us too. I mean, we could close the hearing and put it up for discussion next week and make a decision the week after. This is an information gathering for us as well. So, not everything that comes before us has all the information, like from the neighbors or from other sides of the equation. So, in order for us to get the information that we didn't get, we continue the hearing and then from there, if we get the information we want and it's enough for us to form a discussion and make a decision, then that's how the process works.
So, when do we actually know what they're proposing?
Well, hopefully, they will have the information at the next meeting on the 29th so that you will see what they are proposing.
Seems like putting the
Okay. And what I would like to say to people here is, please avail yourself of the folder in the planning office. If you have questions, you can go and see what is in there too at any time. It is public information. Yes, ma'am?
I was in there yesterday and a lot of the things she's mentioning that were supposed to be in that folder were not in there yesterday afternoon when I reviewed the folder.
They may have come in after.
But they said they were there from July 1st and they weren't there yesterday afternoon.
I can't answer that because they should have been in the folder.
Yeah.
Possibly it was overlooked, so. Yes, ma'am?
I just wanted to know with the concerns coming from the neighbors, is it safe to say that someone will visit the property before the next meeting from the group or?
I think you can think that a lot of us are going to be out there. And at the prior hearing in 2004, we had very good access to the property.
And there's been a lot of change from 2004 to now, activity in the
I understand from all of your testimony that there has been quite a bit of change since then. So, I thank you for coming and we'll look forward to seeing you again. Yes?
Can I make a comment, please?
Yes, go ahead.
Especially to Mr. Reposa. If you read the agenda carefully, what it says is, and what they're asking for, is a special permit modification, modifying one of the special permits that's already been issued, to allow for storage of non-agricultural equipment and materials in the existing contractor's yard. That's what they're asking for. That's what it says, right here on our agenda. And that's the information that we have. Now, it says, "In an existing contractor's yard," but that doesn't exist. Okay.
Okay.
So, now you know what they've asked for and now you know what we have to consider. Thank you.
Okay. And we're looking for more definition like you.
Yes, Lauren? Just procedurally, I think you need to make a motion to continue. I don't recall hearing that. But also, I think it's important that what has been transcribed in your agenda was not what our application says. So, you have to look at your, at the application that's been filed by the applicant. If the agenda is transcribed in a different manner, that's not within the control of the applicant.
That's true, but I don't know that that's a fact. I don't know that that's a fact sitting here.
Okay.
I haven't seen what you're saying you have submitted
Okay.
On the benefit, for the benefit of the applicant.
I'll, it's in the file, but I'll, again, I'll just give you more information on that when I file my letter.
Thank you. And now, can I have a motion to continue this to July 29th? We kind of got
So moved.
Okay.
At 7:00 in the town hall.
You want it at 7:00 or at 6:30?
You're going to have your joint meeting beforehand.
I understand.
So
What time are we going to do the joint meetings?
Probably from 6:00 to 7:00.
6:00 to 7:00. Okay. So, we'll do it 7:00 then. Town hall, Selectments Meeting Room on the 29th.
At 7:00. So moved.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Has it been moved in second at all? In favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you again for coming. And now we move on to discussion of the applicant.
Good point.
And people, please move outside so that we can continue this meeting because we can't hear over you. The applicant is Wald Management Incorporated, Site Plan Review, to raise the existing inn and construct six condominium units on .59 acres with associated parking, drainage, and landscaping and foundment engineering. And for the applicant?
Yeah.
Is there someone here?
Yes, sir.
Ah, there you go.
It's all this stuff.
The very crowded room. I'll have to get up to the podium.
Good evening, Madam Chairman, members of the board. For the record, my name is Stephen McKenzie and I represent Wald Management. With us tonight is Attorney Jeffrey Nickerson, on behalf of Wald Management, Michael Borselli, the Principal of Foundment Engineering, and myself. Attorney Laura Marnihan is also here on behalf of Borselli. We were here for one hearing previously. We want to discuss what changes we've made since then. We listened to questions and concerns of the board. We also listened to some of the concerns from the neighbors as well and we've made several changes. This is the existing plan of the foundmats area. If you recall, it's pre-existing, non-conforming, several violations of setbacks, access coming in, supply coming in this side. This is the parking for the condo's development that was approved two years ago on the other side of the street. So, what we're doing is we're changing that to this site plan. And remember what we had first, the planning board didn't like, was our first site plan, we had 18 parking spaces in the front with six distinct different areas. The planning board had some concern as to some of the neighbors above us backing out onto the public way in violation of one of the sections of 109. So, we've changed this into something that works much better with that with the town plan and there seems to be something that he's much more interested in seeing into aggressive concerns of the board. So, we've moved the buildings simply back. Buildings now sit 46, 48, and 47 feet back off of Meltrat Way respectively. We've moved the parking areas to get rid of the backing out onto the street and we've provided two parking spaces, which is what's required under the code, with two driveway spaces for each of the units. The driveways will be dedicated to each unit. There's also a turnout area so that they can turn out and then come out onto the road without backing out onto the street. Same thing here, there's two here. It's been backed in this way, backed in here. So, we've got rid of the backing out onto the public way by putting in driveways and moving the buildings farther back off of the street. By doing so, we were also able to reduce lot coverage by a slight amount, both for structures and for structures paving and parking. So, this works much better. It also gives us the opportunity to provide a guest spot so we don't have overflow parking in that the turnout area could be used as a guest spot for each of the units and then they can still pull out onto the street that way. Meltrat had a request for a fire hydrant, which we've put at this location here in accordance with his letter. So, that's been added in and also allowed us to move the water lines, which originally ran around the back of the property. The buildings stopped at the front. So, now we end up with a very nice green-looking layout where there are islands in the center that all have large trees on them, with the green all around, privacy between each of the buildings. The, we're actually taking out on this new site plan, the retaining wall that was here, we're just going to have it sloped down. There were two small retaining walls on the side and those that come out now. There's manco's in the front, each one of these. We discussed the traffic the last time we were here too and as you recall, the ITE trip generation manual says that we would produce a total of about 35 trips a day from the six units. It's slightly less than six trips per day for a condominium. A 19-room hotel with guests, staffing, deliveries would produce somewhere between 180 and 200 trips a day. So, there's a significant mitigation of the traffic that would be generated from this development. Those are the changes that we've made since we were here the last time. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have, as is the rest of the development team.
Yes, Doug?
I really understand. Isn't it a single-family residence zone?
It is a single-family residence zone, but the building is pre-existing, non-conforming and so we're, it's dealing with zoning. We have applied for a special permit from the Zoning Board of Appeals under Section 240-3, which allows us to take one non-conforming use and convert it to another non-conforming use, provided that it's not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing non-conforming use. So, here we have the non-conforming structures, which violate setback in several different aspects. It violates it also in lot coverage. We're taking away a non-conforming commercial use in a residential district and converting it to a residential use in a district. The only thing that's, will be non-conforming after this development is approved, if it is approved, will be the multifamily aspect. All of the buildings meet all the zoning setbacks and the use will be residential use in a residential development.
And what about the curb cuts, though? Is that?
These are just driveways off of the road.
So, that you're not considering curb cuts?
No.
Driveway is a curb cut.
Yeah.
There's no curb. We're not anticipating any issues with a curb cut or poos.
No, what I'm saying, a driveway is a curb cut. I mean, any residential building, any residential home that has a driveway that goes out to the street, it's a curb cut. It's always been my understanding. Is that, am I wrong?
I don't, I don't agree that that's a, we're not tying the curb. There is no curb. Anyway, just pointing it back.
Well, there's no curb in my neighborhood either, but
You can, in a single-family dwelling, my understanding is you're allowed one curb cut.
Yeah.
And so, if you have two curb cuts or if you put a U, you know, a U-shaped driveway and you have two curb cuts, I don't know whether you can get, you have to get special permit for that or not, but I don't think, I'm quite sure you're not allowed to do it unless you do.
Well, my understanding of this is too, when you have five or more parking spaces, we're dealing with a commercial usage, whether it's residential or not. We're dealing with commercial, unless I'm wrong, but that's my understanding of it. And if it's commercial, you're allowed two curb cuts. And there are, what, six here, I think?
Six.
Six. But the other thing that I find, as disturbing as I did the first time, is that the, we don't have the dimensions for the setbacks and for the parking areas on the plan here, at least. I was not able to discern the dimensions.
I believe the plan says on there that there's 40. Parking areas are nine by 18, which is typical, which is what's required under the code.
No, I know what it says. It says parking spaces are nine by 18 minimum, but we do not have that defined on the diagram that we're looking at here. And we do not have the setback from the street, again, because commercial is, the parking's not allowed in the front yard if we define this as commercial because there are five or more parking spaces. So, what I'm asking for is better definition of the dimensional setbacks in the parking spaces. And Mr. Borselli may be able to speak to that, but I do not see it on the diagram that we have here. And I would want to see it on the diagram because that is what we would be approving.
We can add that on. That's a section of the bylaw, Chapter 109, or the five spaces. We're not applying under, if it was something new. We've applied under 240-3, which allows us much more flexibility. We don't have to comply with every other section of the bylaw. We're putting more curb cuts than you might like to see, but it wasn't sitting down with the planner to have individual driveways. We'd like to see that, do something better. As they say, 240-3 allows us to do other things that are non-conforming. If 240-3 didn't exist, we'd be coming to you as if this was a clean slate to put up something new that had read all the other sections of the bylaw. That's not what 240-3 is about and that's what we've applied for the special permit because that allows much more flexibility for something that was pre-existing and non-conforming.
I just need a, this pre-existing, non-conforming. If you're tearing down something, what is pre-existing and non-conforming at that point?
Well, if, that's, that's what we're going to be dealing with with the Zoning Board of Appeals, but that's what the bylaw says, that if something is pre-existing, non-conforming, you are allowed to make changes to that.
Right, to that. Right, to that, to whatever exists. But if something doesn't exist, how can it be pre-existing again?
Okay, it doesn't work that way. There isn't a magic point that when you knock the building down, all of a sudden, now you've lost that, and now you're going to come back and comply with the bylaw. If that was the case, there'd be no reason whatsoever to even have 240-3 in our bylaw. The state statute, 48, Chapter 6, and our bylaw provides for that flexibility. If we had to have everything comply with all the other sections of the bylaw, there'd be no reason whatsoever to have that section of the bylaw. And nothing would ever come, be redeveloped in this town, because it would just be as if you were coming in with brand-new, and you'd have to, in this case, we'd be coming in with a single-family house, meeting all the setbacks and lot coverage. And that's not what 240-3 is about.
Can you give me some examples in Falmouth where we have six units on a half an acre? I'd like to see how it works.
Well, directly across the street, you, this board approved two years ago four units on a smaller lot. You have, I'll give you a perfect example, there's the Casino Wharf. There's eight units on thirty-eight thousand square feet.
And where's that?
The Casino Wharf restaurant, where the condos are. The Allen Dale Apartments out in West Falmouth. The Marine Park Condominiums, which David also built, which was thirty, twenty-nine units. It was a project that we did several years ago. So there are the Allen Dale Apartments, the six units that Steve Herd had put on the old Ideal Spot Hotel in West Falmouth.
Okay.
But we're also looking...
Those are just recent ones.
We're also looking here at an overage in lot coverage, twenty-seven point eight percent. And I don't know that those had an overage in lot coverage.
I believe that several of them do, but again, under 240-3, we don't have to meet the lot coverage for something new. We're actually reducing the lot coverage by structures that are out there right now. It's twenty-eight point three percent is the existing lot coverage by structures, and we're reducing that to twenty-seven point eight. So we're not required under 240-3 to come down and meet either the twenty percent or the twenty-five percent by special permit.
Okay, well, what it seems like to me is that we've got a number of questions here. Dimensional questions, we don't see any landscaping detail, and that's what we need to see under Site Plan Review. That doesn't, tell us.
Yeah, there's a whole chart that tells you sizes and quantities of what's going to be put on for landscaping.
We don't have it.
It was filed, I've seen it up in the planning board office. There's a, I think it's called L1 is the number of the sheet, and it's in the file upstairs.
We've got Sheet 1 of 3 through...
Those are the new revised plans. The landscaping plan, this one didn't change. If you don't have one, we'll have another produced and have it delivered to the board.
The whole front's entirely different, how could the landscaping plan not change?
Right.
The whole, I don't understand that comment. The last time, we saw all these parking spaces backing out into the road, and that's all changed, and you now say the landscaping hasn't changed?
No, I'm saying that the landscape plan was filed.
I thought you just said it hadn't changed, I misunderstood you, I'm sorry.
No, it looks like this. That's the landscape plan that was filed.
Well, we don't have it. So we don't have sufficient information here in front of us.
I'm sorry, Ms. Kepner, if it's not in the file, we'll have another group of plans prepared for...
And again, last time, it was made very clear, we did not have the dimensioning we needed, and we still don't have the dimensioning we needed. I cannot discern it on this plan, and I don't know if anybody else can, but I can't in looking at it.
You still do not have what...
The dimensioning.
Oh.
The setbacks, the driveway dimensions.
Madam Chairman, I'd like to speak to that. My name's Michael Borselli, Falmouth Engineering, and I wanted to talk about site design review matters, not zoning. This plan was developed subsequent to your first meeting, and then a meeting with the town planner, and then a meeting with engineering staff, Assistant Town Engineer Scott Schlotter. And these modifications, we believe, were what were requested or suggested by the town planner when we had a meeting with him. As far as the dimensional requirements, I think whether or not I put the number nine and eighteen here on every spot, you can still understand that a standard parking space in your bylaw, 240, 109, is nine by eighteen. We noted that in the general parking requirement notes over here. Each unit will have two cars in the nine by eight spot. I'm happy to give you a plan that shows those dimensions. With regard to the setback from the street to the parking, the parking spaces themselves, the dimensional nine by eighteen foot space will be set back from the street twenty feet to the rear part of the space. Again, I'm happy to put dimensions on a plan that show that, if it helps clarify things. I had a meeting with Assistant Town Engineer Scott Schlotter, and we went point by point through every dimensional layout concern, drainage concern, driveway entrance concern, and on every point, he agreed that the revised plan satisfied him, and he had no further concerns. I had assumed he would have commented. We delivered the plans on July 2nd to the planning board office, and I would have assumed that he would have got a copy and had an opportunity to comment. These driveways do require what's called a street opening permit, and you're allowed to have more than one on the front edge of a lot, but the town DPW has certain geometric requirements and certain requirements not to shed runoff onto a public way. This geometry meets the standards of the engineering department. We modified the drainage from what was originally here, which was cross-trench drains to standard catch basins, which is in his memo. He was satisfied with that. We submitted new drainage calculations to the board, and I went through those with him at his office, he was satisfied with that. So from my point of view, other than the dimensions that I can add to this plan to help you more readily understand it, even though I've explained it, I'm happy to add them to the plan, I think this is the direction that we were guided to, and not the revisions of the site layout. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, well, we do need dimensions, because if we approve this plan, this is what we're approving. So we definitely need the dimensions on that. When I talked to this town planner, I got a different idea as to what you were planning than what I see here. So that's all I can say on that. This is what you came up with. We need the landscaping, but we also need something else, because July 22nd is the last meeting, and that's our next meeting. And so we will need you to request an extension. Otherwise, we'd have to vote on it at our next meeting without having the information in front of us that we require.
We anticipate that, Madam Chairman.
And that will require a letter, I believe. So that would have to happen before the next meeting. Mr. Wald?
My name's Dave Wald, for the record. I personally delivered the landscape plan to the planning board, and I brought, at the same time, a set of copies to the ZBBA. I do want to address the density problem, because since I've been in this town since 1980, I did quite a few developments. And one thing that always bothered me about the zoning issues in this town, when they did the one-acre zoning going across the board. In any of our lovely towns, Newport, Woodstock, any town in the country that's lovely and has stores like Falmouth, downtown, the residents are closer. You don't put an acre downtown, that's what you do in Hatchville. As you get closer to the town, lots are smaller, and it's what makes it quaint. It's what makes Falmouth downtown quaint. As you walk up the street, there are dumpsters behind retail stores on each area. The density of what I'm doing and what the people in the back will put some pressure on the retailers to clean that act up, and it'll also help bring downtown, people take walks, they walk down streets, it doesn't look like a mess. As far as the one-building lot versus this, well, it's been in the family for a number of generations. It's been, it's being left to the family that doesn't want to run it in, and that's all they have. The value of this property is that for this site, if this was a one-family house, it just wouldn't happen. I don't think I have to do it. I think by the, Steve McKenzie mentioned, the bylaw that we're going by, and so we believe we're in our rights. I did meet with the town planner. I showed Brian this plan, and he said, "That is a vast improvement." I did go to the review committee. They said, "This is a tremendous asset to the community, it'll help that area." I did bring some letters from the buggers, not the ones back there, but the ones in the back, and they said, "Maybe they see it from one direction, from what we see, the existing buildings are disgusting from the back." Right now, the building is right on the curb. Now, if you don't tear it down so that you can rebuild it and be on the corner, what Brian said to me, what I understood he said, is they took out the word rebuild in the bylaw so that a developer can't use rebuild to get past that setback requirement. So they tried to alleviate a developer coming in and say, "Oh, I can build right on the road because of grandfather." So they took out the rebuild. So this isn't a rebuild. I couldn't rebuild. As much as anyone would want me to, it's not in the bylaw. Change is in the bylaw. I'm changing use, I'm changing structure, I'm changing appearance, I'm changing the location. Change. There's plenty of room here, there's room between each building, it's really a lovely town. Here's a summary of this landscaping, and these are, these are capes, these are nice capes. Little chinked capes. So I think we tried to answer every problem that came up last time we went in front of the board, when all the neighbors came out. And this property will increase the value of everyone's property, as one of the letters says by one of the buggers. And it will make, when I built the Falmouth Square Inn, that was a dead area, that was a burned-out building sitting there, nothing was going on. After I built it, it became lovely. And a lot of my, what I did behind, in Suppawissett Road, not Suppawissett Road, Palmer Ave, behind Palmer Ave, right near the bike path, it's a lovely kind of development. People come out, they don't like it, the board is very cautious, the hindsight of my projects are, they're lovely, I win awards, they look great, and they work well for the town. I don't break any laws, I work with the bylaws of the town.
Yeah, I'm not arguing any of that.
I just want to...
We are very restricted in what we can look at for Site Plan Review. And what we have here is not what we normally look at for Site Plan Review. So we are requesting that we get what we need for Site Plan Review.
No problem. I thought the landscape plan I brought had all those dimensions, but you didn't get it for some reason.
We need it on this plan.
Yeah, we'll supply it, okay.
There is some confusion, I'm looking at a driveway that shows a stone wall in it on the plan I have.
There is some confusion. And this is the second time...
How can we approve that?
When we were here last time, we had a similar problem. We had delivered the plans to your board, and then, and the right ones weren't here. And it's the same thing again, and I don't know why I delivered them personally.
But this one is the change plan, it shows that thing there, but also shows a stone wall where you're calling the driveway.
Oh, the landscape plan shows the stone wall.
No, this is not a landscape plan. We don't have a landscape plan.
Let's see what we're talking about.
I'm confused, you're talking about a driveway with a stone wall in it. Where is the stone wall? Is that what, that stone...
No, the stone wall's existing.
Then what's that?
The circles.
Yeah.
Mike.
Well, it looks like it indicates stone wall.
To me, is it...
Right here.
It's an overlaid...
Because that's an existing condition, and this is the driveway, they're both overlaid on the same thing.
Yeah, the stone wall that was a concern was on this border.
No, I'm just trying to understand the driveway.
Yeah, right now, there's a stone wall that, that...
So what we have is existing conditions, all the plans are all overlaid on the same thing, we don't have...
We need to have something clear, so that we can...
You have Sheet 1 of 3, Madam Chairman, that shows just existing conditions.
Sheet 3 is the...
Okay. That's Sheet 3, where's the...
That's showing existing conditions.
So that shows the stone wall. This is the new layout with the existing conditions still in it.
Right.
It's just...
No, we need a clean one.
Yeah, that's not how a plan's supposed to be.
What you're saying is you don't want existing...
No, we'll take the existing condition on one plan, and the proposed condition on the other, so we can see it.
An approved plan can't have the existing conditions as to what we're going to approve, so this is unapprovable as it sits right in front of us. We can't have what is there on the same plan to approve it.
We will be happy to submit your claim plan, but it's been common practice to submit plans that show overlaid, overwrought existing, so that when you, the boards look at them, we've been doing this for years, they can see what was underneath. That one stone wall, there was a concrete retaining wall over here, that's coming out. The prior plan had two small retaining walls, we're taking those out completely. There are no retaining walls within any driveway locations.
What we need is a clean, dimensioned plan that we would approve without any, you understand what we need, okay? Then we can look at it as a clean plan, because this gets us confused. Does anybody else have any comments or questions at this point? Okay, so then it is understood that you will submit a letter to the planning office requesting an extension, and I don't know how long an extension would be necessary, because I don't know our schedule, vacation schedule, et cetera.
Why didn't you say thirty days?
Okay, so request a thirty-day extension through the planning office, whether we need it all or not, at least we're not hassled by having a push against that. And I think, again, I will reiterate, because a lot of people don't understand, we only, as a planning board, can do site plan and review. We cannot determine whether this is a legal or illegal rebuilding of it. We cannot determine anything that has to do with the historic nature of the property that is not in our purview to do at all. And I know there is confusion about that. So please ask for an extension, and...
I think, Madam Chairman, before I finish, I just want to make sure we have everything you want. You're looking for a clean site plan without an overlay, a new landscape plan, and an extension.
A clean site plan without an overlay with the dimensions on it. We need it fully dimensioned, okay?
May I just comment on Mr. Wald's...
You have to come up to the podium, please.
Discussion's closed. It's a discussion.
No, it's not. This is the Site Plan Review.
Leslie McDonald, Queen Street. Mr. Leary asked a question about lots in town that had the density that was proposed here, and each one of the ones that was answered, Annandale, Ideal Spot, Marina Park, none of them have parking in front.
Thank you. This is Sears, and I'm doing this in order of the way the hands were raised.
My name is Anne Sears, and I live on Locust Street, and I'm concerned about the loss of the Elmarch Inn, and I wanted to suggest a step that perhaps the planning board could take, which, to save the inn, which would be to refer it, to make a discretionary referral of the inn to the Cape Cod Commission as a development of regional impact. I believe, and a number of other people believe, that the inn, as a witness to the War of 1812, has historic significance to the entire Cape, and that the Cape Cod Commission would consider, would be... consider, would be able to consider the historic significance of the inn, whereas you, as the planning board for Falmouth, are not, are under constraint and perhaps unable to. I have here short history of the El March Inn that speaks to its regional significance. And also, I talked to, would you pass this down?
Sure.
I talked to Sarah Corta at the Cape Cod Commission, asking her if Falmouth could refer the inn to the Cape Cod Commission, and she said, "A permit granting authority, such as the planning board, or the selectmen, or the zoning board of appeals, can make that referral." And that the site plan review step that you're in now is a good place to do it before the developer puts more money into plans. If it were referred to the Cape Cod Commission, the commission could ask for further studies. We did this with Highfield 15 or so years ago. I think it's the only other building that Falmouth has referred to the Cape Cod Commission under historic significance. So, I hope that you will consider this step if you reach a point at which this, it becomes important to you.
Thank you. Mrs. Hayward.
Nancy Hayward, West Falmouth, and I am on the Historical Commission, but we're not, generally speaking, commenting about historical issues. I have a question about a sheet which is labeled Town of Falmouth Planning Board Referrals. This particular sheet says, "May 8th, 2014, subject Walt Management Incorporated Site Plan Review, Location 26 El March Inn." I believe that you had this before you, and I think you had a comment from the fire department. I don't remember who else you had comments from. And my question is, why on this form do you have Historical Commission? Thank you.
It is a generic form that is sent out to all kinds of bodies.
Thank you very much. I would suggest that if you don't take any comments about historical issues relating to your site plan review, that you delete that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments at this time? Okay, then we'll look for, yes.
For the record, my name's Jeff Nickerson. I'm an attorney here in town, and I'm here on behalf of the applicant. I would just point out that the applicant feels strongly that a referral to the Cape Cod Commission is not appropriate under the DRI definition, because the definition of a development of regional impact is a development which, because of its magnitude, or the magnitude of the impact of the natural and built environment, will prevent development issues affecting more than one municipality. And the development as it relates to this site relates only to Falmouth. Just wanted to make that point.
Thank you.
For the record, I'm Laura Moynihan, and I represent Florence Richardson, who's the property owner, and I'd just like to speak to Ms. Sears' request. This property is subject to the demolition delay bylaw. You may have heard this testimony, and if you have, forgive me, but that's the procedure that the town has adopted since the Highfield Hall case 15 years ago. At that point, there was no demolition delay bylaw. Now, we have a bylaw that's been created, essentially put forward by the Historical Commission and others, to adopt a local procedure that if a building that's listed on the cultural resources inventory, as this one is, is subject to demolition, that the applicant and/or property owner meet with the Historical Commission. The Historical Commission makes suggestions for possible incorporation of the building into project plans, for possible reuse of the building off-site, the possible incorporation of the historic significance into any new design. The bylaw is very specific, and that's what Town Meeting has adopted as the procedure for developers and the Historical Commission to work through. That process has not been undertaken. There's a six-month period of time under that bylaw where a permit can't be issued, and the Historical Commission and the public are given the opportunity to work with the applicant and the owner, to work through the issues that Ms. Sears is talking about. So, in fairness to this developer and to the property owner, to make such a referral is when we have a local bylaw that has been adopted to address this very issue, hasn't even been invoked yet by the Historical Commission. That's a hardship. So, I would ask you to not consider that. Also, we're looking at site plan review here. So, if you decide you want to make a referral to the Cape Cod Commission, you essentially would have to make findings that your access, circulation, drainage, parking are such a magnitude that they require a regional review, because they have impacts outside the Town of Falmouth. I think that would be a very, very difficult finding to make. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, one more thing I keep forgetting to say, but now that it was brought up, and I know we're not supposed to be talking about historical. The building was not there during the War of 1812, it was on Main Street. I don't want the building, I only want the site. Anyone who wants the building is welcome to have it. I'd like to see the Marriott use it and build its wings off of there, then everyone's-
I think I remember this time with Highfield, and the demolition, the conservatory filed for a demolition permit, and the Secretary of State, or Attorney General, approved the demolition, the town's first demolition delay bylaw. It came over the wire, but he had signed it two days before the conservatory applied. And if it hadn't been for the bylaw, the conservatory could have gotten that permit that day. And because of the delay period, we were able to file a request to the-
But that's not germane to this. I understand what you're doing.
I'm trying to tell you that Laura doesn't quite have it right. It was, one thing came before the other, and we could do the other, because the demolition delay bylaw came through.
Okay.
I'd just like to clarify that that was 1995. The demolition delay bylaw was substantially revised a number of years ago, as you well know. It is now much more expansive, so that's what should be offered here. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I don't see any other hands waving. Any other questions from the board at this point? Okay, then we'll just continue this until whenever we'll get the request.
Will it be on your next agenda?
It will be on the 22nd then.
Yeah, because you'll have to vote your-
Oh, that's right, the extension.
You have to accept the signature.
Yeah, okay. So, it will be on the 22nd then. Thank you all.
Thank you.
And this doesn't need a motion, because it's a site plan review. Okay, then we are meeting a motion, guys, for adjournment.
I move to adjourn.
All in favor?
On third.